Good morning, everybody. This is June 11th for our Downtown Parking Committee meeting. First item on the agenda is the roll call, please.
Committee member LeBree.
Present. Present.
Committee member France.
Present.
Committee member Newkirk.
Here.
Committee member Janeway, excused. Committee member Pratt.
Here.
And Chair Penner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is any changes to the agenda this morning.
No, Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Excellent. Okay, this takes us to item number four on the agenda, which is public comment. This is a time for someone in the public who wishes to address the committee on a matter in the jurisdiction of the committee, but not currently on today's agenda. Do we have any members of the public?
Mr. Chair, before we get started, Megan, if you could please advance the slide. Just want to review quickly the process for public comment. So we do have a few members of the public in attendance today. If you would like to make a public comment, you're going to go ahead and use the raise lower hand button on your webinar controls. When we see that hand raised, then the organizer, I will notify the chair and the organizer will call on you when it's your turn to speak. So just go ahead and use that button if and when you're ready to give public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak? Please do so now.
Okay, I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll close public comment. And we'll move to item number five, the approval of the minutes from May 14th, 2020. I have a motion.
I'll move approval. I'll set Matt will second that.
Okay. I have one comment to make on the minutes. There is a comment in item one that says Chair Penner talked about the use of a tower. And I have yet to figure out what that meant, tower. I don't know if that meant column. So I would make the request to modify the minutes, remove the word tower from there and use the word column.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we can make that change. Do I need to amend or are we good?
You could just make the motion again with the amendment as cited by Chair Penner.
I'll move approval of minutes with the amendment as proposed by Chair Penner.
And I will second that.
All right, thank you. We have a first and a second, all in favor. All right, I guess we need to do a roll call, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Okay, committee member LeBree.
Approve.
France.
Approve.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
And Chair Penner.
Approve. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number six, Plaza Activation and Business Reopening Strategy Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members. So what I'm going to do is just kind of go over what we've been doing, kind of a play-by-play experience of reopening the business environment and how that's gone. We just want to keep that discussion going and get your have you make sure you have the pulse and then any comments you have about that strategy. And then those are the two key items on this agenda today is the Plaza Activation, Business Reopening, and then the parking lot reopening. What are we doing about that? So I'll just start with the story. It's, I gotta say, it's in my career, which is almost 30 years now. I've never seen anything like this from a transformation of possibility, let's just say that. So the Plaza reactivation has been about your mission statement, which is the economic vitality of downtown and access for downtown. When we were in the COVID situation, the question was with the governor's limited opening strategy, the question were twofold. How could we, as a government agency, help the restaurants succeed even though they had limited capacity? If you've ever been in the restaurant business before, then you know that you can't operate at 50% seven days a week. It just does not work. And then the second strategy, the second thing we're asking ourselves is will anyone come downtown? It's just almost strange to be thinking about it, but I think it's important to know that we were at that place. Will anyone come downtown? Will it be acceptable in the COVID environment? Will people feel safe even eating with each other? And those are the kinds of things we were asking. So the space that we created for those businesses to be successful, and it was really intentional about success of business, was to utilize State Street in some way so that the businesses could expand from their business frontage and have outdoor seating where we predicted people would feel more comfortable eating in the outdoor environment. And then the other thing that we thought to do are these things called parklets, which have been around for a long time. Parklets have been around for a long time in other communities. We had never really thought of that for Santa Barbara because, you know, the whole Historic Landmarks Commission and a parklet and, you know, could you do a Spanish Revival parklet? You know, it just never really quite fit with our town, that thinking. So we, you know, although we've come to the bridge many times and we've never crossed it, seemed correct to do that here in a temporary status. A parklet is a space that typically restaurant in the parking lane, which is eight feet, and then the parklet goes out six, generally protected by parked vehicles on either side. So we began to develop guidelines extremely fluid, extremely like changing every single day. The team, the downtown parking team, I got to tell you, you know, I can't imagine how long it would take to develop a parking guideline in real life, like if you really wanted to do that and take it through all the processes. We had parking guidelines in about three days, really nice, easy to understand parklet guidelines. The State Street guy was a little bit more fluid because we wanted to see what would happen. So I'll start with the State Street experience. What we had decided was that the tables would be in the streets and people would have to, restaurateurs would come across the sidewalk, go out in the street and serve. So that was what we started with. We started announcing it. We, in the process of closing the street, which we got donation of, you've seen the pinwheel palms out there, we got a really great donation on those and brought them out with lash construction. They've transported them, put them at the heads of the street to try to make it look a little pretty. We knew whatever is going to do is probably going to be around for a little bit. That day, as we were doing that, we were meeting with the businesses, telling them the plan on the 500 block. We invited all restaurateurs to come down and talk to us. And then unanimously, they said, hey, we want to have the seats next to the business. We don't want to necessarily be out in the street. So we changed the guide an hour and said, okay, you're going to be up against the business. And then that Friday night, we were a little bit overwhelmed and a little awestruck that how many people came out to State Street that night. And then it's been like that ever since. People are clearly not afraid to be out. I think we are a little bit more afraid about how many people were out without masks. We've tried to put up signage to encourage people to do more masks. The tables of social distancing has been working well. And so here's our posture and how we've done this is every day, sometimes two hours at a time, we're shifting to accommodate what's happening. So we just keep shifting to accommodate what's happening in real time. And one of the things that happened after the first weekend is sidewalks were blocked and then we had some ADA issues for sidewalks, which are really, accessibility is extremely important for our downtown. And so then, so we had to shift again to allow a path between the restaurant and the seating, which those exist now. And then people did spill out eventually into the street, particularly in the 500 block, but we're seeing that, we're seeing that now in the 700 block, in the 900 block, the 1,000 block, and the 1,100 and the 1,200 blocks. Not so much in the 1,300 block, they were on the sidewalk, but everyone has spilled out and kind of, the way we like to describe it is we laid the canvas and people are painting. So that has been working really well. And then, like I said, we have been, we have a team of folks who are constantly walking the street and making sure that it is appropriate, both from a social distancing standpoint, from an alcohol standpoint. And just a side note, ABC has been very flexible in how we roll this out. And then on an ADA standpoint, just as an example, we took two members of the Accessibility Committee for the city out to the street and we walked the street with them and noted things that needed to be adjusted. And that's the kind of thing that we needed, we continue to do, we just keep adjusting. We're on our seventh version of the State Street guidelines. So they just keep shifting. That's on the website, Outdoor Dining at SantaBarbaraCA.gov. You can look at that, Outdoor Dining. And then regarding the parklets, people were really startled because they say, well, I'd like to do a parklet. Can I, you know, where do I submit my application? And the parklet, the parklet guide, here's what's required. It is, it says, follow the guidelines carefully. Snap a photo when you're done and send it to Outdoor Dining at SantaBarbaraCA.gov. And that's your approval. And then we'll come out and make sure everything's fine. So that's what we've been doing. That's how we've gotten the parklets out fast and not been in the way of restaurateurs who really need to get out fast and provide that seating for their customers. The first parklet was Savoy that went up in the Figaroa West, Zero West Block, and we've seen many, many, many more. And again, some of them have issues, primarily ADA has been the issue. And then we're chasing down solutions in real time. We have parklets going up on Coast Village Road. We have parklets going up on Cliff. We're actually the side streets of Cliff. We have a lot of people who want parklets in the Zero Blocks in downtown. The 1,300 block, the two main restaurants in that block, Jane and Opal are both, Jane's parklet's completed. Opal is in the process of constructing their parklet. And then what we've noted is that the 1,300 block, which is the Arlington block, doesn't have a lot of traffic. So we're actually, next week, we're going to reopen that to vehicles and pull back the start of the pedestrian promenade, as we're calling it, to State Street. So that is the story of reopening. I could tell you that we've also entertained partial road closures in the funk zone, Santa Barbara Street in front of Llama Dog. There's a partial closure. And because that is a relatively low traffic street, it just has two stop signs on either end of the dining encroachment. And then it just says, one card at a time. We installed that that last Saturday. Watched that very carefully. Looks great. And then we're also considering the Victoria Zero Block, the Public Market, Bouchon, Ollie Le Monde, and there's one other restaurant, I'm forgetting the name. They all would like to take over the street and provide, have a two-month commitment for some really nice, they want to invest in some really nice outdoor dining scene, let's call it. So we're going to be considering a decision on that next Tuesday. And so this is the way it's going. It's just this very active rollout, adjustments as we go and seeing it evolve. I will tell you that both Derek Bailey, well, our whole team, we have been a little shocked at the response. Give you a couple of things that I have noted is that I was on the street at 5:00 PM on Sunday. Now, and Sunday is without a weekend holiday the next day. Sunday is kind of quiet down around, they start quieting down around 2:00 to 4:00. 5:00 PM on Sunday was just as active as near, close to noon. There were so many people on the street, still enjoying it, still out. And then Monday was really busy. And then the other thing that's happened that we've done is because the 500 block has so many restaurants in it that have come out, and maybe some of you have seen that, they're coming out, they can come out to seven feet from the center line, so 14 foot space for a fire truck to get through. We asked the farmer's market if they would shift up a block to the 600 and 700 blocks. And they did, and they did it fluidly. And now on Tuesday, you're beginning to see kind of this real powerful locals feel. And then other people started popping up in the farmer's market. And we talked to the farmers and said, well, we'll just go around them. And we gave a permission to expand up into the 800 block. So now Farmer's Market is almost three blocks now with dining happening amongst the market. So, and then the people who run the crafts, I get a Makers Crafts Fair at the De La Gares Street in entrance to the Paseo, Paseo and Awayville, they're also coming out on Tuesdays now. So you've got this pretty powerful locals night that's developing. And we're working with Downtown Santa Barbara, who has a new executive director. Her name is Robin Elander. And she's really chasing after this locals night concept for Santa Barbara. And that's really cool. So the sleepiest day we've seen so far has been Wednesday. Usually it's Monday, it's Wednesday. And then we'll see how, you know, usually on a Thursday evening, things coming back alive for a business, we'll see, and we'll continue to monitor that. A lot of people are asking us and telling us, you know, can this be permanent? Quite frankly, I have no idea. I think it's too early to talk about that. I think we just need to let it go. We've been working with Jason Harris, our Economic Development Manager, and talking with him that before we would even do that, we would maybe even be talking about, you know, when we get closer to the end, what the pulse of the business environment is after we've gone through a summer. I will tell you that there's, the one significant change that I note from a transportation standpoint is that State Street has gone from the most likely place you'll get hurt on a bike, also the most popular, to one of the safest locations to bike in the city. And that is profound. And what we're seeing is lots of parents bringing their kids out to bike as young age, young ages, as young as five. Some of those bikes that don't have the pedals, very young biking going on on State Street. And we're, so we're seeing that. And that has been a lot, I will say, a lot of tension for pedestrians that the cyclists are in the street. And we've had cyclists say, can you get the pedestrians out of the street? We say, we have pedestrians saying, can you get the bikes off the street? And the bikes represent about 50% of the activity that's on the street. And then there's no alternative routes downtown for a cyclist either. So I think what we're seeing is how, you know, the tension of marrying the two. We put a bicycle speed limit of five miles an hour. We've asked for no stunt riders. There is some really neat clubs that are out there that they like to do wheelies down the street. And we've done some enforcement on that. It's tamed down a bit. The Bicycle Coalition came out and also talked to that group to try to dial back the aggressiveness of that riding. And so we're seeing this renaissance of State Street in that it is now kind of treated like a park, almost. It's like this new park. It's not just a commercial center. It's where you go to be on your bike. And mind you, I've been noting and watching, these parents with their kids are coming, they're bicycling all the way to State Street. So they're commonly coming on other streets to get to State Street. And as I see them bicycling on bike lanes on upper, or not upper State Street, but between, primarily between Alamar and State, it's just really fascinating to see this transformation happen. The other thing you should know, if you haven't found out yet, is that bike sales are through the roof during COVID. And we're going to see an entire generation of cyclists 20 years from now who will comment about the time their parents were off work for a long period of time and bought them a bike and taught them how to ride for the first time and how special that experience was. I believe that's going to happen. So all this is playing into State Street and reopening business. We have businesses saying they have never done as well as they're doing now, which is pretty amazing to hear and pretty gratifying as this team and people on this call are pretty gratified that we've been able to help businesses as much as we have, given the fact it was so challenging during the time that people were closed. So, Mr. Chair, happy to entertain, you know, questions or comments or suggestions. We're taking notes and appreciate your guidance about the reopening of State Street and the Plaza.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Yes, I have a couple comments, questions, and then we'll pass it around. But before I do, could you possibly, for the benefit of the committee, I've also sat on the Recovery Task Force for the city. So I'm in other meetings with Mr. Dayton, so sometimes I confuse which meeting I'm, where did I hear this? And when you were talking about the blocks and all, there was quite a bit of conversation the last task force meeting about the 400 block. A lot of, you know, people want it open, why it's not open. And maybe you could just explain for the committee's benefit why the 400 block is not open and what maybe we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the 400 block is becoming more and more of an albatross. So, you know, without talking about, you know, the plaza, but first just lay the setting, the 400 block is quite a bit different than the rest of the blocks. It's four lanes versus two lanes with right turn pockets. And it, so the mid-block cross, you'll note, has an overhead mast arm for the center signal. And the reason that is, it's four lanes. And that block sits between two one-way couplets, Gutierrez and Haley. And then also, I don't know if you knew this, but now you're going to know, Chapala, it is two-way because of Fire Station 1. So Fire Station 1 at Correo and Chapala, from that moment, Chapala is two-way, so that particularly for the purpose that the fire department, in fact, the only reason, is so the fire department can go down Chapala. But they can't move over to State to get into the undercrossing on Gutierrez, because Gutierrez is one-way in that section. So they need to go on Haley and then go down State to access the water from. So that's the first big issue, is they need that street open for fire emergency access. And then, and then the emergency responders are, show us that they need the two-way traffic in the case of emergency because they'll be coming up from the waterfront saying, respond to something in the downtown. They need to get to Haley. So that's the challenge. I think it is, I think it is a balancing act. I think it is a challenge for the businesses because the businesses were really looking forward, you know, on the 400 block in particular, where the sidewalks are so narrow compared to the rest of the plaza, there we're looking forward to coming out. And then, you know, we can get there as a city team, then, you know, it's challenging for them. And then the other things that are on our minds are the fact that, you know, before the 400 block was wide, now it seems extremely wide because you're going from a pedestrian promenade to a four-lane street with small sidewalks and everyone's coming from the waterfront. And the section past Gutierrez, between Gutierrez and Yanana is the fastest downtown State Street. For some reason, people just like to air out the motor, I don't know what it is, particularly after turning left from Gutierrez, you know, not cool, not safe. And so we're thinking about, how do we, because you guys are all aware that we're going to be widening the sidewalks as a part of a permanent project there and creating a safe buffer zone for bikes under the undercrossing. We're thinking about putting K-rail down in the undercrossing and doing that now so that bikes that are going under there will have more protection. And the families that, you know, that their parent brought them down to the promenade, now they want to go to the beach, they'll be able to make that trip safer. The 400 block is key in considering that. So we're still talking about it, but it is a real safety issue for fire and police, and we honor that.
And thank you, Mr. Dayton. I do have one other question, comment, and then we'll open it up. But, and I'd like Mr. France to weigh in on this. But I think one of the biggest issues I have seen, heard, been asked about, and you brought it up in your report, and the benefits of bikes in there. I've also heard a lot of, as you said, it's been a big conflict standpoint. And I guess I would ask, if we were designing the promenade, if we were said, hey, let's design a promenade, would that be a normal use in a promenade or a Paseo like we have? We often refer to the Third Street Promenade as the example. I mean, do they have bike riding through their promenade? What do we have? So I think this is going to be a tension point for a while, just bringing it up. What are the driving forces that, you know, require us to have bike riding? I certainly think if, you know, just like we have the rules, no bike riding on sidewalks and no skateboarding on sidewalks, how do we deal with that? I don't know, obviously, I don't think it's answered today. I'm just expressing that I think it's one of the biggest hurdles, I think, for the long-term success. One, the positive nature, as you said, people coming down, riding their bikes, getting there, using the bike to move through. But also the complication of it being a sidewalk or a walkway. You know, during the Sunday art show, we don't particularly, you don't want bike riders riding up and down the sidewalk during the art show. They have a bike path to go to. So just throwing that out as a point to make sure we're, you're hearing it, I know you're hearing it, but I just want to make sure for the committee's benefit, we're hearing it. Does anyone, if anyone else has a question, comment regarding this, please go ahead and turn on your camera, please.
I just want to say thanks to staff for the report. Rob, it's really great information. And Trey, some of your comments really resonate with me, too, and questions. Thanks.
Hey, Matt. Ed, I saw your camera on. Could you come back? Or Mr. Newkirk, go ahead.
This would be into the punch. I had a question about like live music. I mean, I went down, I was on like the 1,200 block State Street Saturday night a little before 8:00. And it was, I liked it, but it was like, there was at least one DJ and one live band in the street. And is that, how is that going to get kind of regulated or is it just kind of not going to be regulated for the time being?
Such a great question, committee member Newkirk. It's, so it's by the ordinance that the council passed that allow all this stuff to happen. There is no amplified music allowed. So, you know, talk about difficult conversations, a bunch of bureaucrats trying to decide what music is okay or not. And I think the challenge is, you know, just speaking, I'll just speak from personal experience of owning a restaurant on State Street is when, you know, so my restaurant, it was 801 State Street, the Broad House. And there's a great position for someone to be in front, at the head of the San Nuevo Plaza. And when that person who was singing there was really good, everybody loved it and it just changed the ambiance. It was so amazing and everyone's having a good time. And then when that person who's amplified can't sing or can't carry the tune, then the whole dining experience shifts to something awful. And I, and I, I think that that is the challenge is a bureaucrat or a city official who's trying to decide, you know, what's right is, you know, how do you choose? Uh, you know, you, you can't, you can't, you know, it's not like we have, uh, you know, auditions for the street. So, um, the, the, the answer is it's, it's not allowed. And then I think we're seeing how it evolves and whether we're going to enforce what's out there.
And I'll follow up, I guess, a comment is like, there is some non-amplified music. And it was outside one of the outdoor dining spots. And there were like people, like couples dancing in the street. And I actually thought that was like really nice. It was like a really kind of positive thing, uh, seeing people kind of be happy and hoping and, and getting engaged. So like, I don't, I don't mean it as a bad thing, but I can see that being, kind of there being tensions, um, moving forward, especially if like the place next door is playing stuff you can't stand. So, um, so yeah, and then I guess, um, a kind of question, maybe comment, like, you know, talking about parklets. And I'm thinking like, you know, that Zero Block West Figueroa in particular, where there's a lot of small little eateries that, you know, typically have like no outdoor space and often very limited indoor space. And if you go there, one of those places like on a weekend, you might not be able to find a place to sit in any of those places. I mean, I think the parklets are such an obvious and good thing. And the parking there on the street doesn't seem to have a ton of value as far as that. Cause there's a, you know, one of our lots is across, is right there. Um, and it seems like, you know, are we gonna, you know, take this opportunity to maybe reassess some of the, like, the zero-block-on-street parking? And maybe, and look to do, you know, um, look to allow some of those restaurants, you know, through, you know, easements or whatever, to make those things a little more permanent. Cause I think especially with the weather that we have, at least in the summer and maybe lunchtimes even in the winter, that just seems like such a great use, such a better use of that public space. Um, and maybe this, this experiment can be a catalyst for kind of swaying public opinion on that hopefully. Cause that just seems, I mean, that is, it seems so obvious. Um, rather than have people crammed inside in this climate, um, it just seems like such a better use.
That, that's brilliant. Uh, so Chair Penner and Committee Member Kirk, Newkirk, Newkirk, sorry, Andy. I, uh, I hope that, that Committee Member Labrie comes on and talks about this because I know he has had this vision for the zero blocks. And this is, this is, you are just nailing this really great point that, uh, so here we're in the parking business, right? We provide parking for downtown and then we, uh, as a committee are activating this plaza. Well, uh, parking in this town is a very controversial subject. Taking, taking a parking space out? I mean, we have brought single parking space removals to this committee that have been split vote. You know, so, yeah, so there's that foundation. We have seen, it, it's like all of a sudden clarity by people about what is the most important issue really we're dealing with here. And, and the most important issue is people activity. And since we have the capacity, as you point out, in the parking lots and in the parking system, you know, we're, as a committee, we're talking about how our, over time, our, our numbers have been going down. Absolutely, yes. Uh, the, the, the parklets in the, particular that block could work really, really well. And, and Savoy is the first one who did that. We haven't seen anything from Los Arroyos or Norton's uh, or the other places there. I think there's a smoke shop and a, and a coin dealer there. But it's a really cool, unique quintessential Santa Barbara block. And I think that, I think that question really nails the point about the balance this committee and the policy we do. Are we designing, uh, at the end of the day, we, I think we always need to call attention. Are we designing for people activity? Cause that's, people activity is the, is the economic, uh, uh, goldmine, if you will, of this downtown versus parking and how do we still accommodate access and make sure people can park, but do it in a way that they want to come to this place?
And then just quickly, my final just comment is, I just want to applaud the staff and this, really the city for moving quickly. You know, hopefully this will be sustainable and, you know, time will tell what, where things go. But I think it's a really, um, nice job by the city, kind of getting things accessible and, and working to make sure these businesses can get through as best they can. So that, you know, when we get out the other end, we kind of have a viable commercial corridor. So, thank you.
Thanks for that.
Mr. France, you had your camera on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Penner. Um, and thank you, Rob and Sarah and Victor and all of the downtown parking staff. I, I want to echo my friend Bob Newhart, oh, I'm sorry, Andrew Newkirk. What, like, what amazing work, like, and I, I think that it's not just the work of the last couple of weeks uh, in terms of the first stage of, of, you know, opening back our economy. But I think it's the work of the last couple of years to think out all of the different possibilities for revitalizing State Street that has allowed for this moment. So again, like great work. And yeah, like the parklets and how quick that's all happened. It's all exceptional, but I think a lot of hard work kind of laid the groundwork for these possibilities. And that's just, I think, music to all of our ears that, um, that our downtown businesses are, are feeling success after such a difficult, difficult last couple of months. So, uh, I'll, I'll chime in, um, in terms of bike access. Cause Chair Penner, great point of, uh, what a, what a great problem to have, which is a problem that we have that already, there's basically, uh, too much activity or somewhat of a conflict of activity. And I remember going out that first Friday during the day, just to kind of see what was happening in terms of the closure. And I also was amazed at how many people were out. And everything was just, uh, super fun and open, uh, in the, uh, in the upper block, starting, uh, just, uh, south of Sola. And then as it came down to like the 500 block, it just started like, oh yeah, there's a lot of people here. And I think that, um, you know, there's kind of two things about bike access. One is State is the primary bike route. And your other alternatives are kind of State, I'm sorry, are either Chapala or Anacapa as sort of like, sort of one-way cuplets. And, uh, there was previous work years ago to actually have bike access or better bike access for those, uh, envisioning some type of state closure, but that never happened. So, um, when I'm on my road bike, I'll ride Anacapa. But, uh, going uphill on Chapala is like kind of a no-go. And, uh, so that's just one of the transportation kind of challenges we have. The other thing I'd say, and I think Mr. Dayton mentioned the, um, portion of activity that is by bike. And I think that's really invaluable, um, because I think people want, I think part of the secret sauce right now is that we're starved for a little bit of like activity and people watching. And people biking by helps that cachet of the outdoor seating, uh, helps actually physically bring people there too, because people aren't just, people on bikes aren't just going through. And also it really helps stretch the blocks. I think that, uh, where we have a lot of congestion are the lower blocks. Uh, the reality is there are some people who love walking and are walking all up and down. But most people are going to walk a couple of blocks at a time, whereas people are going to be biking all the way through. I think that in terms of improvements that could be made, something I would kind of challenge, this team to think about is some type of designation in the congested areas of, um, kind of like chalk or something like that. Like, hey, this is a, this is where the bikes should go. Cause I think part of the congestion is just people are walking all over and people are then trying to bike through it. The bikes are, are moving around, trying to like find a route to, to what I noticed. And then people walking tend to be a little bit more static and kind of is like a clump. And so, um, it's kind of the same problem that we've had forever on weekends uh, and during summer on the beach path, uh, with Chair Penner. I would love if that was a bike path, but it's the beach path. And that is just like, you can just have like a wall. It's like, almost like a football lineup. You know, like completely blocking the bike path on both sides. And then there's no through traffic. And that's why people are always biking on, uh, cabrio instead. Cause it just doesn't make sense to try to bike through pedestrians. So I think that we have that same logistical problem and I would love to see some solutions for that. And I also just really want to, uh, shift and applaud the thinking for the 400 block and for the underpass. And since that's already, you know, a major project, the underpass redesign, um, that's underway. Obviously K-rail and stuff like that is, is more of an endeavor than what we've done so far. But I think that would be really great. Maybe we could free up some space on the 400 block and, and, you know, reduce that like kind of extreme width, uh, that causes speed. Also, I just want to say for the parklets, yeah, they're amazing. I think it's especially like on Figueroa, but in other spots, I think they're just so, they're such an amenity. And I would just consider, I know the, uh, palms in the planters are expensive, but as stuff gets more solidified, uh, maybe in some cases, we could actually get, free up a couple of palms to go on the edge of, of, of parklets, uh, instead of recommended parked cars, especially if we get like a line of a number of businesses all wanting parklets. Uh, maybe a planter could be on either side, uh, especially just to like, if that's what the vibe is going to be, that, that one side of the street's going to be just parklets. Um, again, kudos to downtown parking and to the team. Like, I think that this rapid response is critical to the health of our downtown economy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. France. Um, Mr. Pratt or Mr. Dayton, did you have a comment?
Well, just happy to respond to any, uh, Committee Member Francis's comments. Yeah, I like, love the idea of getting more plants against the parklets and we will look at that. I know there's some vendors who do want to donate. The, the thing that I didn't mention in, in, when I talked about State Street is, you probably don't know this yet, because it was announced yesterday. Uh, Santa Barbara has been ranked third in the nation for bicycling. Uh, and, um, we were 12th last year. We're going to be first probably within the next four years is my prediction. And, and that emphasis is, is Committee Member France, France was talking about, has really driven a lot of cyclists, uh, because State Street is the, the most popular place to cycle. Before we, uh, put the promenade in, that's where people were, were cycling. So it is, it's a very interesting, uh, challenge to, to try to combine them. I will say that we did, we did consider channelizing cyclists on the street. Uh, we, we considered all sorts of things to deal with it, but one of them was channelizing. And, and the, the, the issue there is that if we channelize cyclists, then it would be their turf and we think they would go faster. And then one of the things about pedestrians, as Committee Member France noted, as is, is the case with the beachway, pedestrians have no idea that there's a bike road. They just walk right across it nonchalantly. So we thought actually more people would get hurt if we channelized the bikes. And, um, kind of in response to Committee, uh, Chair Penner's comments, we, in, if we were talking about a permanent, we'd have to put some sort of channelization down. And then the question becomes how wide and who's on it. But you'll remember that we were talking, and I think we talked about it with this committee. We were talking before this all happened with COVID. We were talking about a, a half closure pop-up. It would be one-way State Street for vehicles with loading and unloading. And then two-way on the southbound for two-way bikes on the southbound side. So interesting conundrum and, and trying to weigh all that.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Um, Pratt, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I agree with all comments.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Dayton a question here. When, so he's, um, and before I actually ask the question, I want to just also echo what everyone has said about staff and how great it's been and the effort, again, being on the other task force. I've seen it firsthand and the, you know, all the meetings that have happened to get there. But, um, all, all, all the, all the staff, uh, Rob, have been so great in getting this done. I know it's been a lot of work, but thank you to everybody who's been involved in the parklet guideline and all those things. It's been very, I think, uh, very clearly articulated. And I think that's helped businesses move as fast as they could to, to get going. So thank you on that. I think we obviously know that one of the biggest issues with this is the genie's really out of the bottle, right? Um, and so how do we, when do we go or what do you see as the mechanism from going from, and without a crystal ball, from emergency operations, ordinance, whatever? What is that trigger point to say, we're now going to look at this, all of this in a long-term way? What, what, what does that? I mean, we're kind of doing it now where this is a great way to find out the problems. But there's going to be some point when someone's going to say, do we keep doing this or not? Thoughts?
Absolutely, Chair Penner. You're right. We, and, and we, we, particularly in the last week, people are starting to say, what about permanent? You know, let's go permanent. And, you know, I gotta just really caution everybody to, to, to slow down on that thought because, uh, we are having extreme positive response from restaurants and that's good. Uh, I think we're, we're seeing very positive activity. I think activity we didn't expect. Again, I think it's the treating it like it's a park. So this is the place to be. And we're trying to keep that safe during the, the pandemic stuff and the outfalls, is it, is it, is it Peters out? But, um, that, we don't know how all businesses feel about this. And we won't know for a while. I, you know, I think at the end of July, uh, in the, in the, you know, at our, at our August meeting, we should be talking about some statistics about feeling and value of the street, the, the sustained, the sustainability of the street during the weekday. The State Street is so different every day of the week and every hour of the day. Remember, one of our challenges for activation is to have the street activated from early in the morning to late at night. Right now, well, prior to the whole COVID situation, I think now we're seeing a lot more activity. Prior to COVID, we were seeing activity from about 12 noon till about six. That's about what you would get. And that's not enough for economic sustain, uh, sustaining the economics of that kind of linear commercial retail, uh, even when you add in the zero blocks. So, you know, we, we need to see something that is, is more active. And we need to hear from the businesses on their bottom line of how that goes. I will tell you in, in Pearl Street, in, um, some of the other successful promenades, Pearl, Pearl Street is in Boulder, uh, the, the rents in the middle of the pedestrian promenade are less than the edges where the cross streets are. So on those models, the, the economic model is less valuable in the middle. And as you get to the edges where there's more drive-by, they're higher value. So I, I want to, I'd love to see what that, what the summer looks like. Does it pan out? And then, um, and then I mentioned Jason Harris, our Economic Development Manager. You know, the question he's asking, which I think is wise, is, um, if, if we kept this experiment going through the winter, well, would that look like? You know, is that different? All these things play into if, if the community is embracing this idea of how we get to some design permits. Cause that's the other thing I bring up is who's going to, what money is going to pay for this?
Right.
This committee is very astutely This committee is very astutely aware. Of the financial condition of the city for the plaza and particularly for the downtown parking budget. So I think these are the questions we have to wrap our heads around and tackle and really look at before we're so quick out of the gate to say. Here's what we should do next in terms of permanence.
Well, well, thank you. And I agree. I mean, I think that's, I mean, this is a huge effort if it were to. Move a, to any permanent scenes. I mean, you've got. You know, like you said, design and store, you know, water management and all these things. And I just, I'm just throwing out there, obviously. We have to be aware that at some point when, or it needs to be clearly articulated, if things are not going to stay. Away, when do those, when does that get explained that, hey, by the way, this might be changing? And I think everyone kind of gets it now. But, you know, once we're in, as you say, if we're in the same situation in November. Then it's going to be talked about holiday and then it's going to be, and then it's just going to be, and so. I don't need to, you know it, I'm just expressing it that at some point it's going to be a tough. To change mindset. We hope it's a mindset change. We hope. Healthwise, the needs have gone away from a COVID issue. We'd love to know that that was not a problem. That's not the issue anymore. Now it's, does it work better or not? So, and one last comment. I missed, I think to Mr. Newkirk's thought about the public right of ways and expanding restaurants into these areas more permanently, long run. I guess I would throw out there a question. Because it is a removal of parking. What would they're just throwing out there is a. A licensing agreement. So someone actually is in an essence renting that space in a long term way. So you're creating revenue for the parking system. So it's not just to give, you know, you would have a lot of conflict, I think, with restaurants saying. Well, how come they're getting free space and I'm not getting free space? So just. It is a public asset we need to think about and making sure it affects the parking system in a positive way if we lose those spaces. So just commenting on that. I don't know if I have any, I don't think I have any more comments on this item. Does anyone else of the committee? Wish to make any additional comments? If so, please turn on your camera.
Mr. Chair, just to add that I didn't say that I think is important for you to hear is that. That delivered with the, with the promenade there, the deliveries are more of a challenge. And so I want you to understand how that's happening. The people who have to be on the street to. For instance, the, the grease trap cleaner who has 150 foot hose needs to be on the street. They do that in the early mornings. We've given some people permission to be on the street in the early morning. And then, and then the downtown parking team has put together new loading and passenger zones. So look for those in the zero block. We've, we've, we've. Put extensive commercial zones. They're, they're 24/7 now. So that they're not parked up in the evening so that you could still get passenger loading for Ubers. And it, and it's a sign that says above, it says three minute pasture loading and lily, and then it says 30 minute commercial. So look, look for those signs and see what you think about the pushing of deliveries to the, to the zero blocks.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. I guess seeing none, I'll wrap up on this, this topic by saying thank you again very much, staff. I think I see a lot of exciting things happening and a big effort. In front of us. Let's, let's keep riding the wave and see what we can do in a positive fashion. For the downtown parking and the plaza. Ms. Clark, I see you have your light on.
I'm just waiting for a public comment.
Okay. So do we have, do we have any pop? I guess you're right. Thank you for reminding me. Do we have anybody of the public that wishes to speak on this item before we? Close the.
Right now I'm not seeing anybody. So for any members of the public in attendance, if you would like to comment on this item. Please use the raise your hand button now and go to webinar so that we can see you. Okay, I don't see any hands raised.
All right, thank you. So at this time, thank you for the reminder. There we'll close, we'll close public comment. On item number six. And we'll move on to item number seven. Parking lot reopening plan update.
And just as an intro, Victor Garza, our downtown parking and plaza manager will be coming on to give you this presentation. I just want to compliment staff and, and the, both the. Great thinking and then also excitement with which. They're taking over the, the task of reopening. I think we're on item seven. I think we skipped, there we go. Reopening, reopening the parking lots and. And, and I know Victor is going to say this, but I'll say it, he can say it seven more times. The reason we'd want to charge again is less about money, although that's important. And more about creating customer available parking as when we don't charge, employees will park in the lot. So Victor, go ahead and say that again, and we'll talk to you soon.
Good morning, committee members. Victor Garza, Downtown Plaza and Parking Manager. As Rob said, downtown parking is not about just making money, but it's about. What we can do to enhance the economic vitality of the downtown. And as you know, we have suspended collect, the collection of parking fees. Since March of, March 18. And we are super excited about all the activity on State Street, the businesses reopening. Folks coming by to check it out and enjoy the, the great ambiance. We've seen the parking occupancy numbers trend up. There've been a couple of times in some of our busier lots where they've gotten pretty close to being full. So. With on-street parking enforcement starting next Monday. We were preparing to resume the collection of parking fees on June, on Monday, June 22. We'll be starting off with. Lowering the gates. Probably next Thursday with, with signage. So that our customers will stop and read the signs that will advise them that fee collection is going to resume on the 22nd. When, when they enter the lot, they will, they, they will simply go right back out with, with a complimentary pass. They, they, they will not have to pay. It's just, it's just lowering the gates is just a. Method to get them to, to read the signage so that they understand that the fees will be, will be collected soon. We're going to employ a contactless transaction, a transaction strategy. We're going to, we're going to be training all of our customers to. To stop at the exit column so they can insert their ticket. And the, the computer will calculate the fee if there's one. And then hopefully with, with the credit card, they can simply insert the credit card into the column, pay for their fee, the gate goes up, and then they're on their way. Our, our goal here is to try to do what we can to ensure the health and safety of everybody involved. The operators and the general public. If somebody doesn't have a credit card, of course, we'll, we'll. Transact that. That exiting with either a cash transaction or a fee due or whatever it is. Or maybe if there's a problem with the credit card, we will, we'll expedite that transaction. But contactless transactions are, are the, are the way to go right now. And, and we're hoping to get the word out that credit card payment would be the preferred way to make sure we have a safe transaction. And we're going to have one shift starting probably around 11 or 12 noon. About a six hour shift. Hopefully we're going to be covering the, the busiest part of the day. The, the hope is that we'll be able to collect enough revenue to offset the cost of, of operations. We'll be monitoring the occupancy numbers and, and of course, the, the revenue we bring in to make sure. That we are covering our costs if, if the need. Thank you, Megan. There's, there are the occupancy numbers from a month ago. And as you can see. At that time, we were very, very. Far below our normal numbers from the year before. There's a three year comparison. There, there's a 2018 and 19 up on the top. And then, of course, 2020 down below. Those numbers have gone up. And, and so we feel pretty comfortable that we're going to be able to cover our costs. And as Rob was saying, again, it's all about ensuring that we've got. Parking space available for our customers. As you know, when we have offered complimentary parking in the past, the lots tend to fill up with employees and they stay there all day long. Displacing the customers that would normally going to the businesses. So I, I think I've pretty much covered the general. Approach to what we're going to be doing, starting June 22. If you have any questions. Staff and I are available to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. I see as we're, we're kind of scanning through some of the, the occupancy there. I mean, it is, it was interesting to see there are definitely some lots that's, and I guess maybe they're the smaller ones. That have had, let's say example there. I mean, then we're getting up to some pretty significant occupancy. And now are we tracking that by that's? How do we get that data when we're not collecting that transaction?
Good, good question. So the system is still operating in that the loop detectors are still functioning. So they are counting the cars as they go in and out. Staff does go out and personally inspect the lots to make sure that, that the numbers make sense. And so these, these graphic depictions here are, are accurate. And, and it's a, it's a snapshot in time. We, we are gathering this data in real time. So like I said before, we're pretty comfortable that we're going to be able to. Recover our costs starting June 22.
And as we've scanned through there, I didn't look at these before, but what, what lot has had the most? Sort of, where have you seen the most activity? Obviously Lot 11, you're seeing there on Saturdays. Getting some pretty high. Occupancies. Where, where have you seen the most activity, you say?
Well, we have not seen any surprises. The, the lots that typically are busy, that typically were busy, have now gotten back up to where we expected them to be. In other words, like Lot 8 during the day, Lot 11 and 12 in the afternoons and evenings. Lot 13 has been very, very slow. The depot lot. And I think that's to be expected because probably the, the Greyhound and bus and train traffic has been pretty slow. But our, our, our lots that, that typically have been busy in the afternoons and evenings are getting back up to their. They're trending up to where they should be when we, when we suspended fee collection, when the businesses closed down. So it's, it's getting back to where it used to be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garza. If anyone of the committee wishes to make any remarks or have any questions regarding this item, please do let me know by turning on your camera. Do we ask, I mean, we also expect, I believe it's this Friday that pretty much bars are reopening. Downtown, am I correct on that? So we have, I mean, we, we should be having, again, most of those, you know, we got a lot of Uber, maybe Uber activity or whatnot. But Mr. Day, can you comment on the next phase of opening and how this might have impacted the parking?
Yeah, the governor changed the opening. We're moving into phase three. That happened, I think it was Tuesday. And so we're going to be seeing even more availability of activity downtown. And, and yeah, that, that should impact things. And I know Victor mentioned this, but one of the, one of the key things is that the on-street parking enforcement starts this Monday. And then the employees who are parked full time on the streets now, who are not being enforced, will move into the parking lot. So one of the key ingredients to, to the, to the lots, to the lot, the lot. Use that you're seeing, it does not include the employees who are on the street who will move to the lots. We want that over, overlap of a week to see what happens. Where I think it's going to be really interesting to see. When we're doing enforcement on the street, how, how our parking lots fill up and what that difference will be. I think that'll be educational for us. And, and we do want to be sensitive. We've already gotten some emails because the, the signs are posted for the 22nd, June 22nd. We've already gotten some pushback from the community and, and you're our, and kind of our emissaries of the, of downtown parking. So I repeat it again, the reason we would charge for parking is because we want to create customer availability. There is not enough parking downtown for everybody. Employees have the squeeze, if you will. And that means that we need to, charging keeps the employees out of the lots and available for customers. And that's why we would do that. So we'll look at that in between week and see how the data aligns. And I think that staff is ready and be fascinated about, by that. And then, and then get it open for customers.
And, and one other question, what's the happening with the commuter lot as far as? I believe we are not charging for the commuter lot. Are we triggering that same activity as well now?
That's a great question. And, and staff has already begun notifying all of the monthly parking permit holders, including the commuter lot parkers. That we will be resuming billing for those permits in July. So they'll have some time to, to make their adjustments. Of course, those that are still working at home will not, don't need to pay for their permits if they're not going to be using them. But our hope is that, that those employees that are currently parking in typically the hourly lots like. Lots three, four and five will then move back to the commuter lots and maybe Lot 10, which has. Quite a bit of capacity for, for downtown employees that are monthly parking permit holders.
Thank you. I'm going to ask. See, Mr. Newkirk.
Thanks, Chair Penner. For, you know, some of those employees, is it? Do we know if it's the case that maybe they're driving to work now because they, that they usually, because they can park for free, but that they usually take buses? Or some kind of public transit? And are we, is there a risk that we're kind of going to force them back into? Maybe some travel modes that they're not comfortable with?
Not sure how to answer that one. Maybe Rob, you can. You can help out with that one.
Yeah, that's a solid question. Mr. Chair, Committee Member Kirk Hart. Newkirk, Newkirk, gosh, you know what? I'm going to get it right, Andy. I'm so sorry. Stumbling over myself this morning. I, you know. That, I think you're, you're, you're putting your finger on the tension of where we're at. Some people are extremely uncomfortable being in a bus. And the Clean Air Express ridership is down. I'll also tell you that in our city fleet, which has a lot of carpools. We're just now talking about whether we can open those carpools. Because of the two people in a car at the same time. Should they be wearing masks? You know, most carpools are more than two. Yeah, I. I, I don't know the answer. I, it's probably, it's probably yes, probably that, you know. With us reopening the parking facilities. Some employees may actually be driving when they're using alternative modes most of the time, be it MTD or other options. And, and they may be doing that because they're not comfortable being on the bus. So I, I think that that's plausible. You could be right about that.
Mr. Dayton, and to that question. I, I guess what we should be doing is reaching out to MTD. And being in connection with them and asking them. and being in in connection with them and asking them, you know, as we do this, please communicate with us, just keep that channel open. So we hear from them if if there is a significant uptick. Good question. If that's happening, we want to know it right away. Um, and just be sensitive to it and be aware of it. So let's let's keep on top of that and maybe let's ask the question now. So say, please let us, give us his data, be ready to give it to us, is what I'm saying uh, ahead of time. Do we have any other uh, committee members that wish to comment on this item? Okay, Ms. Clark, do you want to just uh, do your announcement for public comment at this moment, please?
Um, sure. So if anybody from the public would like to make a comment, go ahead and use the raise your hand button in GoToWebinar. Okay, last call. Go ahead, raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment. And I don't see any hands raised.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment on this item. Um, as usual, well, thanks staff, as always. Uh, we do that a lot. Or we don't do it enough, but we get, uh, need to thank you a lot uh, for working through these difficult uh, measures. I I I would imagine um, it's a fair bit of effort also in dealing with the rehiring or or bringing on some staff that were let go. It's a good, that's a good part for that. But I'm sure it's a challenge for for you all to have to work through. So thank you for doing that. Uh, see no other, uh, oh, Mr. Newkirk.
Yeah, I I don't quite want to go ahead and making a more um, sustained comment on the the commuting. To me, that's pretty concerning. Um, like, you know, the best we can do is see what the data brings. Um, you know, it's a concern that um, the people that couldn't maybe afford a commuter pass or do those things are kind of the lower income employees on the State Street corridor. Um, and so we're kind of, we're potentially forcing um, those without those options um, to put themselves more at risk to keep the businesses running. Um, so I guess I just wanted to make that comment a little more rather than a question that that to me is kind of a concerning potential outcome of of uh, of um, how you guys are planning to approach this. I know we're not taking action on this, so um, you know, I'll leave it as a comment. But to me, that's um, is a bit of a worrying um, potential outcome.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair and um, Committee Member Newkirk, I I think that, I think it's really insightful. I think the challenge for us is what do we do about it? And specifically, what does downtown parking do about it? And we're open to comments and ideas about how to do that. Uh, we uh, we will have the commuter, well, if it, the commuter lots will be open. If if employees are coming down and they need a parking spot, you know, we have the, we have availability in the in the Creo commuter lot at uh, forty dollars, I believe. Sarah could correct me if I'm wrong, forty dollars a month. You know, so there are options to continue to drive. Uh, and then I will also say that uh, that we are not at full capacity as a city commercially. And a lot of people, as predicted, who have offices have ended their lease and are staying away. So there's probably capacity. They'll probably have to walk. They won't have the creme de la creme location. But there's probably capacity, but I'm, we're completely open to comments on should there be adjustment? It doesn't have to be a an action item, but is there, is there an idea of what we could do? I just don't know what that is uh, to to address that.
Well, Mr. Dayton, I would say I I I agree with Mr. Newkirk's concerns. Um, I do though, do think it's appropriate as we've moved into phase three from the governor's reopening plan that this was a, is a normal outcome to move to the parking lots to this point and and start that next level of activity. And I appreciate the concern and I agree with the concern that uh, this could create an increased ridership on 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 buses. I I'm not sure how to change that, though. Um, you know, I I, at some point, we're going to have to 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 move to that point. And I think it is an appropriate time here at the at the stage. And I guess that was my reason for saying, let's be clear on getting the data. If it really truly is a huge influx, then we might want to have to react differently about it or be more vocal or 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 look to provide more alternatives clearly and quickly. As you just said, there there will be parking available it's to go to. And maybe we just need to be more clear, making sure we let people know of those opportunities that are out there. So that would be my step to take next if we see this uh, increasing. But but I I think it's a a super legitimate concern. Mr. Newkirk.
Yeah, you know, the cap asset, you said forty dollars?
Yes.
So that, I mean, that's, you know, when you're looking at MTD rates, I mean, that's not actually, that's not that bad. So maybe kind of getting, you know, making sure that, you know, there's available, there's options and people know that that, you know, they could get a commuter pass like on a monthly basis for the time being and make sure that those people that might have, who have been driving and not having to pay, know that they have that option available to them um, that maybe never considered that in the past. So maybe that's, you know, enough. And then, yeah, tracking data to see kind of how this plays out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, before we close the site, and you mentioned um, the the work of uh, that that was required to to bring the staff back. And I and I wanted to take this opportunity to to um, send a big shout out to Roy Forney and all of his staff with uh, the tremendous work that they did to keep in touch with all the lot operators to make sure that they felt like we didn't abandon them, that we're going to want them back. And um, he was extremely successful in in bringing back the core team so that we could hit the ground running. And so I just wanted to um, send a big thank you to them and 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 um, that we appreciate that effort.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Garza. I know it's not, yeah, as all the businesses have talked about, it's 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 difficult to just uh, start again, rehire. It's it's not just as easy as turning on the faucet again. So we appreciate that and thank you. Uh, please, please make sure they all know we feel that way as well. Um, at this time, I'm gonna uh, end item number seven and move on to parking, excuse me, program updates. I'll let whoever's taking that on.
Somebody's gonna take it on. Uh, just making sure I could see, okay. So the city, first one is the City Council Budget Deliberations. This is going to be a very interesting year for the budget. Uh, if you've been watching what's happening, uh, COVID entered the budget season when we had the budget almost done. Takes about six months to do budget. We had it nearly done. And then COVID hits, downtown parking is going to lose uh, two point five million dollars in uh, this fiscal year. That's going to have to come out of our uh, reserves. That's a very serious thing. And uh, so the presentation we made to City Council was that we uh, accordingly are going to predict a twenty-five percent reduction in revenues next year. And so we recommended to them a series of options, including the uh, automating the light, the lots, which we've talked about today, a little bit of how how we might do that. Uh, and then to uh, to increase and say, increase revenue and save uh, on expense. And then also the downtown waterfront shuttle. We presented that to council to eliminate the shuttle. Uh, that's uh, I think it's around a nine, a nine million dollar, sorry, nine hundred thousand dollar um, expense for us. We share that with downtown, with the waterfront. Uh, actually, one point one million, I think. And then also that we have two positions open. We're going to leave those open. We're uh, cutting, we're uh, having our maintenance, we're consolidating our maintenance between the plaza. You you know that we're, we've, we're taking over the maintenance in the next fiscal year of the plaza from the downtown, downtown Santa Barbara organization. So we're consolidating that with our, with our parking facilities to save money. And then uh, and then we're cutting supplies and service, uh, supplies, purchases and trying to live along with the bare minimum. Uh, so we think we can close the gap. We're not exactly sure what the revenue picture is going to be next year. We had to make a guesstimate. And uh, we'll see how that goes. So so we presented that to the City Council. Now, all, everyone's presenting their budget to the City Council. And then the council's going to be meeting next week to start talking about, okay, we've heard the entire budget. What are the things we're going to balance? Because there's, again, competing interests, uh, less revenue from sales tax, bed tax, everything's down. So uh, what is council's decision uh, with the amount of money that we do have? What is the priority going to be? What are their priorities going to be? And that's something that uh, City Administrator Casey's going to have to be helping them with to get to the answer to that. So that should be something to watch. Stay tuned for that. I could take any questions on that item, Mr. Chair?
I don't have any questions at this time. I'm sure it'll be a a topic we're going to be hitting in full, full swing at another meeting.
Okay. Uh, and then um, the new design concept for the solar array, Victor, do you want to talk about that? Our challenges at Historic Landmarks Commission and?
Yes. So um, about a month ago, the uh, the design team, the actually the construction and design team uh, made a presentation at the Historic Landmarks Commission for the um, for the new, so for the proposed solar array at on the roof of the Grotta Garage. We, we received some good feedback from the, from the commission. So the the design team uh, turned to Henry Lenny, who was the architect of the Grotta Garage. And Henry has come up with uh, an exciting new design that we feel is going to be received with a little more enthusiasm from the Historic Landmarks Commission, hopefully get approval so that we can move ahead with the project. Um, essentially, the um, uh, the the project looks like a, um, like a big carport over the, over the uh, the rooftop level of the garage. Um, but there is, there will be some architectural treatments to the side sides of the structure so that when a person looks up from the sidewalk or from the clock tower, it won't look so imposing. There'll, there'll be some softening of the structure and some some treatments that will um, make it a little bit more uh, consistent with um, the architecture of the garage and the surrounding buildings. So we're, we're very excited about that. And then I guess I can, I can, unless you have any questions about that, I can move to.
I see the turn now, Kirk has his camera on. Let's ask.
Just a quick question. Does that have to go to ABR too, or is HLC the kind of design authority?
HLC.
It's still a break. Uh, Victor, do any of the design modifications reduce the effectiveness of the solar array or or appear to contribute significant cost to the project? I mean, you know, sometimes HLC projects can that that head down that path. Uh, where's that?
Great question. So the design team, the 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 folks at Amoresco, the ones that are the experts with designing solar arrays, uh, worked closely with Henry Lenny to make sure that there was no um, reduction in the um, ability of the of the array to produce the energy that's that would make the project uh, cost effective. So uh, we do have a cost effective design um, moving forward. And the costs are within the budget that they had uh, proposed early on. So um, it's it's been a a great work in progress. So like I said before, hopefully the HLC will see the progress being made to address their concerns and will give it approval.
Thank you. Um, there's one other item, uh, electric vehicle charging station, if you could hit on that too, Victor.
Yes. So some time ago, we partnered with Southern California Edison. They have a a program uh, to to assist with um, the the installation of um, level two electric vehicle charging stations. Um, working with our um, energy folks in Public Works, we were able to um, work with Edison to come up with a design to provide thirty level two electric vehicle charging stations on the roof of the Grotta Garage. The um, the electrical connection has been made, the switchgear is in place, the chargers have been installed. Um, the system has not been activated yet, but we hope to do that soon. There there are a couple little design details that need to be taken care of. Um, but once the system is functional, uh, we will then be eligible to receive the that there is a, there is a reimbursement that we applied uh, for with the um, air pollution control district and Edison. So once, once uh, we're up and running, we'll be able to recover part of the cost to um, to provide uh, these EV stations. So we're very excited about that. There, there's a lot of interest out there for additional EV stations in our parking facilities, and this is going to be a huge step forward with that. I also want to add um, that we're working closely with Tesla to um, put in some fast charge stations. They have identified uh, three locations. Actually, parking lots two and ten, the Ortega Garage and the Canon Perdido Chapala Garage are the two main contenders right now. Uh, Tesla, like, like the Edison company, would cover the cost of all the infrastructure and the charger installation. So um, there's, there's no uh, money, no, no, no cost to the downtown parking program to put in the Tesla chargers. So um, we're looking forward to um, the next steps with with the project. They are um, doing a feasibility study right now with Edison so they can narrow down the the low, the site locations. And then hopefully next month, we'll be able to give you an update on that work.
Yeah, thank you. I I think we definitely like to have that come before us to understand the implications of um, sort of, I guess that's a license agreement, whatever it is that gives them the rights to that. So we probably want to have that come before us to understand what that really means. Um, does anyone have any uh, questions of the, from the committee on either of the three program update items? Okay, seeing no cameras turn on, um, we'll move to the final item. I just want to mention uh, something, Mr. Dayton. I'm sure you guys are already doing this. Um, I'm sure someone's out there taking lots of pictures of all these things that we're talking about, all the parklets, all the things. So I think it's going to be a good, a seriously important scrapbook of ideas to deal with as we move forward. Uh, what's what, what, what went well, what, what didn't go well, problems? And so I know your staff is out there doing that. Uh, I would encourage committee members to, if they see something that they think is um, an important topic, take pictures of it and provide it to the staff to say this is something that needs to go into that, that scrapbook. Because I think we're, we're sort of building a a treasure map along the way here, trying to figure out how it works best. Because I think we're, we're sort of building a, a treasure map along the way here, trying to figure out how it works best. Hopefully using some ideas from other communities that are dealing with, you know, lots of communities are dealing with us. So we're not out there alone and I'm sure you're reaching out and hearing and talking with your constituents, uh, in the same field, other places. So we, it's an exciting time and, um, probably could have taken us years of discussion, if not already, to get to this point. It's happened in basically, uh, three or four weeks. So, um, I'm sure we've, there's some things we can improve on. But, uh, our, our goal here on this committee is to try to increase the vitality of, of downtown Santa Barbara and, uh, and to make sure people can get to downtown Santa Barbara or can get around. So I think we're, you're working hard at doing that. We, we thank you for doing that. So appreciate it. Um, with that, I, are there any announce, uh, my, my, one other question, uh, Mr. Dayton is do, is there any discussion amongst the city staff on where we see, um, uh, what's the metrics for when meetings will go back to physical public? Obviously, our meetings may be different. We have more ability to social distance than others. Any word on that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we, we haven't, uh, been talking about having real live meetings again. And, um, uh, we, surprisingly, uh, these meetings have been going pretty well to have this format. Uh, so I, I don't know how, how we're gonna evolve as a city to, you know, to the next level. I think there, some of the challenges, just to acknowledge them, is getting members of the public, um, on to comment. I think there's been a, a little bit of an uphill, uh, curve on that one. And I think some, that is being more successful, but we want, we have to be concerned about, uh, how the public can access these meetings. One thing that's happening that might be good is that these webinars are recorded. So now downtown parking committees' meetings are at least available to watch on the internet. So I think that's a shift. That's probably making the committee more accessible at a low dollar cost. Uh, we'll, we'll have to see and we'll keep you posted on how that.
Just keep us informed as, as we're all changing. Yes, we're seeing positive, positives from these changes. Um, but it is, I do think there's a value in getting together as a group in person. So I just wanted to get an update from you and let the committee hear that, what's happening with that. So just keep us updated on that.
Okay.
Any other announcements? Anything else, Mr. Dayton, from an announcement standpoint?
I don't have anymore, Vic, uh, Victor. Were you thinking that you had announcement or, uh, Sarah Clark or Roy? I know we're all on the call.
I think we covered it all.
All right. Well, I wanna give a, a, a thank you, get out to the staff. I wanna give a thank you out to the committee for, uh, all getting here online with us. Um, and please do get out there and look for things that you see that you like and things that you don't like. We appreciate it. Stay safe, stay healthy as we move into stage three here. Um, we still have a lot of challenges before us. Um, we're just starting this journey, uh, of recovery. So, uh, stay tuned for more to come. Uh, with that, I will go to item 10, which is the easiest one, adjournment. Thank you all.
Really appreciate it. Great meeting. Uh, thanks to also to the committee members. And we, next, uh, next month, we will have a jam packed meeting to talk about all the things that have happened. And there'll be quite a bit of things to be talking about, uh, next month.
I do have an announcement, Mr. Dayton. There's a likelihood that I will not be able to attend that meeting. So Mr. France, um, hopefully you're hearing this and, um, we'll make sure we have a quorum. I, I, I actually, I, I guess I, I will be traveling. So actually, there may be an opportunity that I can join the meeting. I forget remotely now. So actually, uh, I might be there. So we'll see what happens.
We'll, we'll send you the. Great. Thank you, Chair Penner.
Thank you, Mr. LeBree. Quick question, uh, recruitment season and, and, uh, upcoming spaces. I just, they're talking about meeting, remind me to ask the question. Where are we at?
Victor?
Um, Sarah probably has the answer to that one.
I don't know when they're scheduled.
Um, yeah, so the spring recruitment was suspended, uh, for obvious pandemic reasons. Um, so the next recruitment is gonna be the usual one that they do in the fall. So I don't know actually when that opens. We do obviously have a vacancy on the committee. So certainly if you know somebody who's interested, uh, please do encourage them to apply. Um, but I will look into, uh, when exactly those applications are gonna open up. But not quite yet.
If you could actually forward, or Mindy, could you, if you could forward out that little reminder of opening? And here are the sort of where to go to stuff. Um, if we have somebody, um, please talk to me about it and we can, uh, we do need to add another person to be help for meeting our quorums, um, and just getting more input. So we like that. All right. Thank you all again. Great meeting. Have a great rest of your week, good weekend and, um, enjoy the beautiful weather.
Thank you, everyone.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.